He's got the nice um power supply running through on us and hopefully um keep your fingers crossed about weather. Okay, so this is called order for real. Um, I did, let's see introduction additional appointees, I don't see any. Um, we have um, okay, introduction of city council representative or Andres Spivey. Um, okay, so this would be Bradley Merrill, wish to say hello to everybody and say whatever you wish in addition to that.
Good afternoon, hello, everybody. Hi Zelda. And Sandra Turner Handy and Gregory and everyone on Zoom. I'm happy to be here this evening. My name is Bradley Merrill. I work for Councilman Andres Spivey. If anyone doesn't have my contact, I'm gonna put it in the chat and then um can you share it Scotty or would you guys like me to say it now? I think.
I'd like actually if you say things out loud, it would be better than I have it recorded in addition to the chat. Um, just so also we got people physically present.
Yep, I I'm pretty sure everybody present has my number, but I'm gonna say it anyway. It's three one three two nine six eight seven three nine. And again, that three one three two nine six eight seven three nine. And my email address is M E R R I L L B at Detroit M I dot gov.
Hey, thank you, Sandra. Um, and introduction of guests, the elected officials, I think the only elected officials present are the members themselves. Um, and myself and Gregory being elected. Okay, adaption of agenda. By the way, I actually um tried to call Washington and did not reach him at a phone number. I already emailed him. And I also um did call, gee gee, I'm trying to think from here, um. I didn't have, Karen, maybe you could email me next time your phone number, because I don't think I have it. You don't have to say it out here just so next time. I have a way to back up the email with a phone call. And um I did, I did also, you know, I emailed. Me, I'm just gonna make a quick effort to Ms. Harris. Awkward here, but let me see. I thought she's receiving the email, but let me try that real fast. I got this. Um, meanwhile, um, well, getting that in there, let's move along to, oh gee, sit here. Plugging something into the computer for those wondering what's going on. Okay, I'm also gonna pass out a copy and people online who remember is probably got this already. I actually have the um, I'll give these to everyone present. These are the June minutes that I had recorded as kind of school secretary and chair of meeting. I am also passing out, and again, this is something I really just had sent to the members. Um, and I think maybe the city, it may have sent it to Bradley or um to the clerk's office. But let me get these, these are, these are the May tenth minutes that we sort of adopted at the last meeting. Of course, we didn't have a quorum, but nobody felt they needed any editing. Actually based them on um. Right off video, I actually went through the video, um, which I guess it's good, that's what's been good about having a recording is that I went out the video. Try to be as accurate as possible on that May tenth meeting minute. So um for a moment, while I'm just looking something up and ask the members to kind of review those minutes. And just see if there's anything that needs to be modified, um, because then we could actually um have a vote on both just to make things, you know, um effective. I'm gonna go into um. What I'm opening up right now and um Karen, I believe you have a copy, copies of those minutes emailed to you already. I think it was probably the last email I put out, it would have been early this morning or late last night, that range. See if I can open one.
Are you talking about the moment? Oh, yeah, I have, I have the minutes.
Okay, goodie. Yeah, it was like I, I know I sent like more than one meet email to some people. I'm looking to see if I have, it just occurred to me that I had located um Ms. Harris's phone number. I already emailed her a couple of times. I think I located her phone number. Just gotta look in the right spot here to pull it up. Put a bunch of things on USB. And I stuck it in there somewhere. Um. In the USB, no, I'm not. Okay, getting this here. I got it. I'm in the folder. No, I just gotta go to the file. They didn't record, didn't get it recorded with the C A C information, but Ms. Um, Knox was actually in a group. I'm not making that, I'm sorry, you're here. Um, Ms. Harris was actually in a group I organized um separate from that. And she had, hello. The meeting. Um, she had. I'm going through it. There we are. Um. Been participating in that group and actually I'd seen her earlier that week and surprising. Um, but I'm opening this up now. And Ms. Harris, um, okay, I'm gonna call her on the phone. Is if, if I haven't done my due diligence, make sure everyone's present, then. They already sent her emails. I'm just gonna do this one thing. Okay. All right, yeah, Alyssa Jones, no present, welcome, this is Gregory as well. Okay, um, so the next item on here, well, I've got the phone ringing will be adoption of our agenda. And so with those over and this would be only for the four um extra members. Okay, it's been, there's been a motion adopted agenda as presented. Your box is full. Okay, well, that's that. Okay, well, I did make a follow up attempt. I had been sending her all. Okay, so the um, anyway, the adoption of the um minutes, the motion was seconded. Um, is there um any discussion? Okay, so Sandra made the motion, Gregory seconded it. Um, Karen, um, you have any, um, anything that, any comment to make on that?
No.
Okay, all in favor, we'll go to a vote. So all in favor of the um, there being no objections, we'll go to a vote. I know you want to vote on that. Um, and um, then if there's no objections going to a vote, all in favor. Please indicate um support of the motion by saying aye. And Karen, are you able to raise your hand using Zoom?
No, I, you know what, I'm not clear on what we're voting on.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was adoption of the agenda.
Oh, yeah, can you see me waving?
Yeah, oh, wait, do we go over the minutes first, right? Oh, right, okay, I'm sorry, I'm getting really sloppy here. No, we're, it was a motion on the agenda. Since you were unclear on the motion, we'll pause the vote for a moment. Um, do you have, did you have a chance to see the agenda, Karen?
Yeah, I looked at the agenda, yeah.
Okay, good. Yeah, sorry, because I was handing out the minutes and talking about them and then I I kind of wandered over to the agenda, which actually is first on the agenda. So it's proper order and, okay, so um, is there any, any further discussion needed?
No.
Review?
Okay, new business, okay.
All right, I I am gonna actually, I actually will add that we have some discussions. I just realized I was rushing to a vote, that really was done. Um, and I should have been, I will do one thing on here, which is to strike Coalition for Property Tax Justice from item um four presentations, and that is simply because they canceled.
Well, you said, okay, you're striking the, for the property tax, um, jack, um, tax we call the council, is that correct?
Right, the group was a presentation by a group and there are different reasons given by them, but um one person had illness in the family. The other person had transportation or I don't know, some other issue that prevented um participation. So the bottom line is they're not doing.
Okay, all right.
Let me look and see if there's anything else. Um. Okay, and I will be talking about the other things we might get. So at the moment, what I will say is um, that is my amendment. Is there, is there a second amendment to remove the group that, that they're not gonna be here? Okay, um, all in favor of amending the agenda that manner?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um, we'll now move to a vote on accepting the agenda as amended, all in favor of accepting the agenda as amendment amended?
Aye.
Oppose?
Need a motion?
Go ahead, make the motion.
Second.
Oh, um, Zelda, you're not a voting member.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Gregory second, okay, it's been seconded, any discussion? Uh, then we'll move forward to the vote. All in favor of approving the agenda as amended indicated, amended indicate by saying aye? Okay, do you say aye?
Yes.
Okay, good, accurate, okay, opposed, oh, I say aye also, I said aye actually, everything that passed. Um, I guess I technically don't have to, but, um, okay, so. That, um, is that, okay, so we're now move on to um approval of prior minutes. So that's the other thing, I handed those out. The reason I handed out May and June's is because we did not have a quorum in June and we have a quorum now. So while we have a quorum, I wanted to make sure that that would still be certified or if needed changes that that would be taken care of. So that we could um, you know. Properly have that posted as the real minutes and then we'll, we discuss it June next. So I suppose first, just bring this up, we're on the May minute. Is there any changes since the last meeting, you know, I guess, are there any changes recommended for maintenance? Okay, do I have a motion on? Okay, Sandra made the motion to accept the May meetings as presented. Um, do I hear a second?
I second it.
Oh, we'll, we'll let you have, we'll let you have that second Karen, because Gregory hit the last. Alright, discussion? No discussion of all in favor of, uh, oh, there, um, all in favor of the um May minutes as um presented? Can you take the thing, aye? You know what, I didn't give you, I just really, you walked in. Okay, you give me agenda too?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I was. Okay, welcome. Yeah. Okay, and I'm looking through, because I want to make sure it's one piece of paper. I didn't forget, not much I could do about it now, other than run a short drive again. Um, no, I can't do that, no one's running dry. I'll have to look it up. Um, yeah, I'll just have to look it up. I thought I had some, another item, rent it, but I could pull it up on the computer. Um, oh, I don't do that. I can, I'll have to do it through the tablet, which will be a little weird, but I can do it. Okay, so I'm gonna move on to uh someone, in fact, it was Dan Dolly suggested we add a portion on flood assistance here. Does um anyone here have anything that here, yes, Sandra? Yeah. Oh, God. Thank you, that's a point of order made by Sandra Handy that the chair um failed to address the June minutes. Um, and the chair recognizes that as legitimate um issue that, that we need to give. So um, let's go back to um June minutes, I'm so sorry. Any recommendations, suggestions, changes on the June? Let's see if I get a mobile hotspot out of this. Check if I can get some internet on the other thing. I might have to actually do it directly on the um tablet, just go into the emails. Okay, um. Doesn't look like we have any, um, okay. Um, in that case, anyone make a motion about the June minutes? Okay, Gregory makes a motion to accept the June meeting minutes. Okay, Sandra seconds it. Any discussion on that? Okay, um, then there being no objections, move forward to a vote. All in favor of accepting the June minutes as presented indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, I don't oppose either, so I'm an aye. Um, okay, the um. Flood assistance, so actually there's a couple of things I wanted to bring up about flood assistance. One of them is, I personally went and talked to the people, you may have seen on Channel Four, they live down on Maryland. Um, the Holmes and Larry and Regina, they um. They were able to get some things done, of course, you know, the water department was amazingly responsive after it became a news story. And that's how it goes, yes. And Gary Brown himself was there, of course, and um, but apparently, so apparently they've done um some. Oh, what shall I say, um. Kind of think for a minute, straight. They have um done some um cleaning out, they cleaned out their basement and they promised to do some sanitation today. I'm not sure how far along that gap, but I will be following up with them about that. And I'm just wondering, does anyone here know of, of where people could go to get um compensation for critical flood damages? Like furnaces and that kind of thing, they, they, like, most people have furnaces in their basement.
Where they have, uh, I have some, some, some comments to this.
Two, okay, you.
The city has a claim form online, they can go online to city and fill out a claim. But today I received a claim form from the city that's going to be submitted to FEMA. In order to push FEMA to do the, the financial covering for displacement. But it's not going to replace things like pool tables and stuff like that, it has to be viable. Uh, things in your basement, except you had a beer moved out.
They did. And they got pictures.
Yeah, yeah, but not like a pool table, anything that's not a.
Right.
Furnace definitely fits, as does air exchange system, which they had, which makes it so they're getting a lot of miasma. Okay.
And everything in my basement is mine, watch it dry, everything is gone, my furnace was good, my hot water tank was good. It went out, but it dried out.
Oh, wow, okay. So that's what happened there.
Now, if you have a appliance protection service with um. They will arrive at your house and check into the furnace and set your air unit, I'm sorry, washing dryer.
But you have to have a special um.
You have to have that coverage.
A special coverage for that, so that will work for some people, may not for those who didn't have the car.
Check my hot water tank.
Okay. Oh, my God.
DT themselves come out and check it, because I'm not, I wasn't mature by going to pilot like going out. If gas would still come out. But I was on the phone for four hours with that uh DT protection. My fifty nine dollars I paid every month to get nobody on the phone, and I started at eight o'clock.
They just backed up.
I tried to see where my hotspot.
For the protection.
Yeah, they have something called AT&amp;T Connect here that would enable me to get the wifi so I could use the laptop. But I'm not finding it here right now, I don't know what app that was there. Um, okay, so meanwhile, I guess, oh, here it is. Um.
Yeah, they just picked the harness up on Thursday. They hadn't picked it up over there in that area until Thursday.
So, um.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, yeah, you had, I'm sorry, was that Karen had a comment?
No, that was Bradley, I was, um, so we were talking about um the flood and everything and, and I heard you guys mentioning the city picking up. And just so you, the um district managers have a weekly uh call on Mondays. And you can find it on Facebook on the District Seven page. So if you go on Facebook and search City of Detroit District Seven, you'll find the video there. And um Palencia Mobley, the Deputy Director of the Water Department, and Ron Brundage, Director of DPW. Go over um what's currently going on with the flood assistance and they are still picking stuff up. So if you have neighbors who are still have stuff to put out, um, nobody's gonna get ticketed right now. And they're still making their rounds, picking um up anybody's bulk or waste, um, if there are things like that still going on.
Okay. You, you got all that in the notes, Gregory?
No, that was too fast.
Say it again.
You gotta repeat that, please.
Yes, sure.
Sure, so I was saying that the district managers have a citywide uh weekly call on Mondays at five P M. And um if you guys want to email me your email address, I can get you on the email list for the Zoom link for it. But you can, it's always recorded and you can always find it on this, on it, on the District Seven Facebook page. So if you search on Facebook, City of Detroit District Seven, and then you go to videos there, you will find each week's call. And today, um, Ron Brundage, the Director of DPW, and Palencia Mobley, the Deputy Director of the Water Department. Went over what's currently going on with the flood issues. And so just to put it in a nutshell, um, I, I missed, um, Sandra definitely kind of gave a good overview of it. You want to make sure you do submit those claim forms um to the Water Department. Um, and I, what I had said was that DPW is still picking up any bulk waste that um people are putting out from their basements. Um, you don't have to worry about being ticketed. Uh, there's quite a lot to pick up, so if they haven't come and, and what, you know, maybe you thought they'd be there sooner, they are coming. And you don't have to worry about getting ticketed, so still put that stuff out.
Okay, could you each, um, Sandra has a lot of info and so does Bradley, could you each email me that? Um, and so I could post it on the website?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And also I could email stuff out to people and answer questions and have it. And I have a central place I can refer to where I got everything kind of together to make it a lot easier. Um, and I think right now I might, I'm gonna do something right now that may actually put me on the internet more completely. So there's some other things I could do to make the meeting go smoother from this point forward. And. Right, I think this is the right network. That one, that one. Oh, I got it. I see it's a long. Yeah, I'm about to get online, I think, I gotta find the right. That looks like it. S M T three. Okay, I'm trying to see if I can refresh my network first. Try this again, oh, is it not on? Actually have a wifi here that I should be able to get to, maybe tap it or something. Trying to do this now to make sure that now. Not seeing the network, it should be broadcasting from the tablet. We have to do this, oh, there's another button, ah, that's a trick. There's a switch I had to activate. Sorry, everybody, you're hearing me think out loud here. Um, and please, while I am doing this. Do it again. There it is. Okay, I'm almost done here, sorry, I've been taking so long with um this tinkering around with my wifi thing. I'm doing it right now and um, oh, apparently it already knew the thing, so I didn't do it. Good, I, I now have internet for this computer that I'm on. Okay, that's fabulous, all right, let me move along here. Um, I have now, um, looking at the meeting agenda. We were, okay, so we have the flood assistance, was there any other information anyone wanted to add about the flood? I think we got some good sources here to look in, so I'm happy to hear about that. Um, also, I was thinking of just anyone who have any volunteer um organizations that could do repairs. Like, if someone has, let's say, you know, flooding and they have a finished basement with walls like drywall and insulation and all that stuff gets dunked up. And, you know, I mean, I. and insulation and all that stuff gets dunked up, and, you know, I mean, obviously they'll be able to pay some of it out of pocket, but maybe some of it they can't help, and there might be, are there any like craftsmen out there offering kinda churned up a little? With that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, that's wonderful, yeah, you could send me all that, I need to get this to the people I've been asking.
Cause they're, um, they're doing all that.
Yeah, no, open just before, but I've been on the other side.
Okay.
Uh, across ninety-four, we had the luxury of having volunteer come into our campus floor, and they were able to go to come to see here. Because a lot of our seekers don't necessarily want strangers in the house.
Yeah.
So as community leaders, they're connected to them, and they hope some of the seniors, because they know who we are. But they don't necessarily, the thing the city does is they put that warranty out there about, don't let anybody in, they come and they gotta have this, they gotta have that, that experience about.
Yeah.
Even though it's good information to have.
Yeah, there, you gotta have some process clearly to vet the people walking in, and if someone who seems like a good Samaritan shows up at your doors that they wanna clean your basement.
But how?
They might wanna clean them out more.
You know, so a lot of our.
They're not gonna do all that.
I feel like they should go to community leaders, or different groups, you know, that can, you know.
They'll, they'll trust them first.
They don't trust it. Instead of having strange, because it's gotta be a little.
Right.
They don't want, you know, strangers.
Oh, sure.
I was one of them last time, my house. Right, that, that was a better route to go.
Yeah.
Much better.
Okay, um, so, any other discussion on flood assistance?
You got that correct, because the city does have, uh.
Yeah, no, yeah, the sooner I get that, the better, so I could get it to other people soon, a lot of people. It's a timely thing, especially with the, the potential for mold growth and all that going on.
Yeah, because we actually bring down dogs and my space before with meat and all of that, because it's a real mental health, it's a mental health town for us.
Yeah.
They get so depressed, but they don't know how to come through.
Right.
Get that stuff out of the.
I'm, it, it started getting me overwhelmed and depressed.
Me too.
And I'm fighting with it every day.
And I'm a, I'm a speaker, but I'm able.
To do, right, exactly.
Got depressed, because I had so much.
To do, and so much to do, and we're still doing it.
I'm on the third round of, um, Santa Claus.
I'm taking, I'm, I had to take a break from that stuff.
I did.
Because, because, yeah, no, because you have to take a break, and then you have to collect yourself, and then jump back on. Jump back.
That's interesting what I just do with my computer, um, I think it's okay. Fell and landed on the vacuum, and it amazingly is fine, okay. Okay, I gotta watch what I'm doing. All right, so, um, next thing is we have connected to the internet, nothing's acting really slow. Uh, not connected, oh, no, I'm not, okay.
What you trying to do?
Oh, it, I'm trying to, yeah, it will access email and stuff on the computer. Um, okay, that'll move us right along to, um, let's see, Members and Council Representatives encouraged to request to have presentation. Oh, that's just a general statement, I put that on already, but, uh, that people are encouraged to bring things to it ahead of time. Oh, you know, I gotta re-enter the network key for this, um, thing, that's what happened here. Excuse me. Um. Sorry, I gotta do this thing again, I thought it was all set, it wasn't. Okay, there it is. Where did it go, it's funny, I had it, now it's gone. I get back on the screen. Where did it go? Okay, now I can't find it. Okay, yeah, it's so bad. Some issues with this Wi-Fi. Mobile hotspot isn't being very hot. There it is. Okay, so right now, I thought I said enter a network key. Um, okay, the next thing on the agenda, I'm waiting for this slow process to continue on its way here, is, um, okay, we're on to unfinished business, and current community concerns and plans of action, I'll open that up. Anyone wishes to speak or be recognized, it's right ahead. Can't connect to this network. Do it again. We've done something different. Oh, I got it, no, I got it. Oh, that's good, okay, and okay. Oh, what do I mean about four thirty, hold down a spot, I got your email now. Um, yeah, what happened was the city, I, I, this is the first time I ever reserved is anything through the City of Detroit, and what I discovered in that process was that, um, you need to have someone present exceptionally early to be, um, in order for that person to be, um, in order to hold the spot, or it could be forfeit, and what I was faced with was a case where, um, the, um, I, I would have, I was working, and I wasn't gonna be getting here by four thirty. Um, anyway, we're here now, I got here by five, which is two hours before the meeting, the reason four thirty came up was because when I reserved the spot, I said six thirty to nine thirty, just to deal with setting up and taking down and all that, so that's what that was about.
Oh, it's about using the.
Using this.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So you have to give permission, if you, you can, you have, you don't have to give permission to come up here, or you have to give permission to have a meeting.
Yeah, I think with the situation, in other words, otherwise, if there's a group of people hanging out, then another group of people, oh, we have a meeting scheduled here, and they're like, well, that's too bad, we're having a party. You know, that, that, that point, it becomes a blown a contention, and the only way to resolve it is, does any, either person have it reserved, and if they don't, well.
I mean, if I just brought some people up here.
And hung out, I don't see a problem.
No, how many people do they want you to reserve it, like ten or more or something?
No, there's no number.
Okay.
Yeah, now, I could see what would happen, in our case, if there are other people here, I'd say like, okay, well, you're welcome, it's a public meeting, you can hang out, but I need some room here. You know, and, um, and if they got something that prevents people to be able to hear each other talk, well, then we have, that's a problem. But, you know, I'd say, hey, anyone who wants to be here, I mean, if they want to walk on in here, it's fine, it's a public meeting. Um, okay, now, um, and so we had any other current community concerns, plans of action, anyone I wanna bring up at this time? Okay, it's open to anybody, not just members, anyone who's, um, you know, present. Okay, uh, next, um, this part, now, this is a little touchy, and I was waiting to see how this would all turn out. First of all, we had a situation that I re-discussed at the previous meeting a little bit, where, and I did try to reach her, and, um, you know, I'm like, she's like just feeling uncomfortable or something, but I, I try to be welcoming at the same time, then I'm trying to follow the rules. And, um, Ms. Harris is, um, was appointed by Councilmember Spivey. And, um, but the law, the ordinance says that the, um, and word shall is the operative word, or not may, that the council member shall appoint somebody from the list of members submitted by the elected members. And the elected members were myself, are myself, Gregory Preswell, and Washington Hugheson, who's not present, but all three of us um, participated in that, we did have a couple open public meetings where people could participate and present names to us. And, um, my, and, um, we submitted it by the thirty-first, and actually, at a previous meeting, we were told that it only, it is long, even if it was submitted on um, first of February, it would have counted because the thirty-first occurred on a Sunday. Actually, I'll say it was, um, eleven fifty-eight, yeah, or something like that, on the thirty-first, but in any case, it was submitted on the thirty-first. Um, so the situation that we discussed this, and what I said then was that I would talk to David Whitaker of the Legislative Policy Division, or correspond with him, I could send an email. Um, and see what to do about this, and if there wasn't anything that he thought was anything to change about what was going on, that I would just leave it alone, um, but what I also conceded was that there were a number of people, um, who had submitted their names, um, through the process, that if anyone's an aggrieved party in that process, it's them, the people that had submitted their names, went through the process to be retiree appointees, represent, um, you know, wait, not retiree, um, senior concerns, senior issues representative. And so I was gonna, I'm opening it up right now, um, and I have this in here, it's item C.
So, are we able to, per, from my conversations, it was, well, what did Mr. Whitaker say, did he get back to you?
Yeah, and I, I, he got back to me once, and then he didn't get back to me on my follow-up, which was my initial statement. We, I, I outlined things, but then apparently maybe something got missed, because he thought that we didn't have a forum before that, um, before the thirty-first of January, however, um, it's the thirtieth or thirty-first, the last day of January, it was, there are thirty-one.
Okay.
But, um, we, but I, that isn't what the law says, in fact, it outlines a process of building up the Community Advisory Council. First, you have the election and of up to five members, and then there is the, um, appointments happening through the process described, and then further on down, it says a forum number of four. Which, if you have five people, even if you had a full ticket, that would be eighty percent, which would be, um, an exceptionally high number on elected numbers. Normally, it's a majority, and besides, it doesn't say that it needs to be an approved thing of the full Community Advisory Council. So it says, it simply says a list submitted by the elected members, and the list was unanimously submitted by the elected members, regardless of so that doesn't necessarily say a list submitted by after, after a forum meeting or anything of elected, just elected members. That's myself, Gregory Preswell, and Washington Hughes.
So what I'll say per our office's understanding is, it doesn't have to be someone from that list, so I guess my question to move forward is, we will follow up with Mr. Whitaker to know for sure if, which is true, do we have a problem with Jocelyn being on it, is, do we not want her on it?
I don't have a prob, I don't have a problem with her.
And also, what I want, what I also ask, can I finish, please, Ms. Scotty, could I finish my, my statement, please? Um, so, yeah, so I was saying, so, cool, if there's no issue, then that should, that's cool too, and so what, I'll say, the questions that I wanna follow up with Mr. Whitaker is, because our office's understanding is, it doesn't necessarily have to be someone from that list, and Councilman Spivey selected Jocelyn Harris. Also, is the list modifiable, what if we just put her name on the list, then she would be somebody from the list. Is that an option? Um, and there are other people with grievances that may have wanted to, they can just, you can give them my information, and they can email me, and we can talk about it.
Okay, if they have a hand up, Zelda.
Um, I just wanted to know what, um, criteria was used um, in that selection process.
Well.
Or, or do you, or?
I don't, I wasn't in the meeting when, when the members put the people on the list, and I know that Jocelyn Harris is just someone who, like all of you all, um, is a leader in the community, and, and a strong block club member, and someone that we've worked with through our office throughout the time that I've been there, for sure. You know, as I know her name, as I know all of you all's names as well, you know.
Okay, Sandra?
Okay.
Okay, my, my only thing is that Councilman Spivey appointed me as a senior person, and I had to be moved from that title to just a member.
Okay.
That was based on the same objection.
Which was the same thing for Jocelyn of being.
I didn't know that, Sandra, I, I didn't know that you had to be, and honestly, yeah, I didn't know that at all, that you were appointed, and then it was opposed by the people there, I guess, because you weren't on the list, I don't know why, I don't, I had.
I, um, I actually brought up the suggestion that, oh, well, you know, we can't, we can't appoint her as the senior rep, because she wasn't on the list, but you know what? Um, there's still a missing space of vacancy appointments.
Well, I'll be honest, I.
Why, I think I got it directly from you or from, um, the other, um, Keisha?
Maybe, I'll be honest, I wasn't privy to these conversations about this list until last month, and I didn't know that this whole thing was even going on until last month, I thought I was coming to the meeting with the appointee, and that we would have gotten that done, but, um, then the list conversation came up, so, you know.
So, so now I consider it as a member, I, the appointment went through, but it went through as just a regular member.
Right.
So then when, when, when Jocelyn came on, that Sarah came on, it was the same thing, and Scotty felt since he had already told me about the list, I had to be moved on to a member.
Okay.
Yeah, he wanted it to be kind of big, because he had told me the same thing, but he honored her as a member.
Okay.
Just not the senior issue.
And you, and then now Ms. Harris, I basically just took it as a de facto appointment for now, but there was an issue to be resolved.
Right.
I, I had, I, I still see a pro, there's still a technical problem, now, that being said, the rest of what, what I got from David Whitaker was also regarding the timing of the appointments, initially, we were just upset that we hadn't had received, oh, and before I continue, I wanna back up and address something Bradley said. Uh, regarding adding someone to the list later, that the list would be the list that was presented, um, by the end of January. So the answer is no, not without, and I know I'm being a little funny about this, but I, I, I'd kinda like to be real literal. The only possible way to, for a person to get on that list legally qualifying would be to travel back to a time prior to twelve midnight at January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. So I think that's a no.
Absolutely.
Well, maybe, you know, I'm, I'm, in physics and science, we are open to possibilities, that's why I bring it up.
Not that.
Um, so I don't see another, uh, it, it's not, it's not, in other words, it's not a fluid document, it's kinda locked in at that. Um, the other issue, though, was the matter of timing, and so on the one hand, let's say, for instance, somehow that, that appointment was nullified, the problem then is, we still have an issue of timing, and that, and, and that is that, um, and so I brought, anyway, I brought up the whole issue of that, that, it was, that the, um, charter did not say, the, um, or, and that's, I'm not sure, the city ordinance did not say, um, the Community Advisory Council per se provide the list, but the elected members provide the list, and the elected members did provide that list, so that was the thing I was waiting for him to get back on, back with me, because he was bringing up the forum. And that's what I was bringing up about that. And usually, I mean, a forum over a hundred percent is kind of a strange notion, anyway.
I'll make sure to follow up with him, because I know that that's like an ongoing thing that we've been trying to figure out for the year. But I unfortunately do have to, to leave. So you guys have my contact information, so please follow up with me. Scotty, I'll give you a call tomorrow so that we can, if you need to talk to me, or call me, so we can make sure we figure this out, so that when we get to the meeting next, next month, we can get this out of our unfinished business.
I'll tell you something regarding the youth members, that was going to be our next topic of discussion.
Okay, well, have, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was done.
Oh, okay, well, have a good evening, everybody. Please email, call, text with anything else that comes up. And I will see you guys in your.
Can you get your phone number out again before you leave?
Sure, sure, three, one, I mean, yeah, three, one, three, two, nine, six, eight, seven, three, nine.
And that's Jocelyn, correct?
This is Bradley's number, Bradley from Councilman Spivey's office.
I think I, I have your number.
Yeah, I'm sure you got my number.
I got your number. Okay, all right.
All right, thank you, no problem.
I was just looking to see if anyone is in the waiting room. Okay, um, all right, so that, the other part of this whole thing with the appointments and was also the matter of, so, let me just, I'm sorry, I'm being kind of all over, scattered, I'm sorry. Is there any, any other comments from anyone here? And why, I'm leaving it wide open, any other comments from anyone about the whole senior issues representative appointment? Because I, here's the other thing I was going to get to, but Ms. Merrill, you know, I was going to let Bradley finish up what she was saying initially. The other thing that does, does affect this, is let's just say for hypothetically, that they go, okay, well, that was out of order, so we're not going to have this appointment. Now, Councilmember Spivey has obviously been taking his time making appointments. And by the way, the terms were supposed to begin on February fifteen. And it was my enters, and here's the other thing that Mr. Whitaker commented. It's, and my questions I asked, I said, well, they're supposed to be appointed by the fifteenth, what action can we take here? Obviously, you know, it's way past that. In fact, it's, we're literally more than halfway through the term of those appointees, which was to begin on February fifteen. And so it seems to me that the implication was that they had to be appointed by February fifteen. And the re-answer I got back from Mr. Whitaker on that, and this is all just a response to my first input, was the response I got back was that, let me say this clear, was the response I got back was that there is nothing in the city code specifying when he must make the appointment. And other than, I guess, after. So now we're stuck with the situation of, if the list is recognized valid, and he simply does not want to appoint anyone from the list that we gave him. He can simply not appoint anybody.
So what can he, he can do in next year? Is that me?
We haven't, oh, I'm getting to that. I will also talk about the election in next year.
The term ends, uh, uh, December thirty first.
Yeah, I will get to that, so. I promise, I will get to that, about, about these terms. So, but as far as, all right, well, actually, I will answer part of that right now. Everyone who is, this current, this Community Advisory Council, because it is new, yeah, will end on, by the end of, by noon, and I think like eleven fifty nine AM or something, fifty nine seconds, on January first of twenty twenty two.
Well, at midnight.
No, no, because the new Community Advisory Council will be seated, legally seated, and not that they're necessarily going to meet, at noon on January first of twenty twenty two.
It expires on September thirty first at seven fifty nine EM.
No, no, that's two different things.
Yeah, yeah.
The first, the thing that expired on January thirty first was the deadline for the elected members to submit a list to the council member from which he shall make the appointment. A word "shall" is in there.
So what's the term for that?
The elected members' term ends on noon of twenty twenty two, or right before noon, because the new ones take over it.
Say, say noon, how noon do you say?
And it's because the CAC is just created. All subsequent CACs follow the four-year terms of other city officials. Okay, so, and I will get to something about that that's very important after I get to the other issue, which is that I personally see it as an uphill battle to challenge the appointment of Ms. Harris. But if there, you know, there's, there were outcry from the other people on the list. I told, I think you were on that.
The original list.
There, there's only one list.
Yeah, right, well, that was, but it just, I don't know, it just seemed like this whole thing has, you know, become just a big, big issue that was so simple.
Right.
He could have just done it.
Why can't he just do what it says, instead of finding ways to get out of it? Yeah, like, well, and you know, and I brought these things up before, he acts like he doesn't have a choice. Like, oh, but the law says this, and it's like, no, the law doesn't say you can't, it says that.
But why, but why do you, why, why do we then, you know, have to have all that? You know, it has to be done, just do it, and that's the end of it.
Yeah, he actually says he's not trying to be combative, but I don't know how else to take this.
Well, he sent him a very nice email.
Now, one thing, and I'm gonna, I will disclose, I'm a candidate for office, but I'm not going to use this as a platform there, but I'm just going to bring this up as far as trying to figure motives. And I can't read other people's minds, but I'm just going to state a fact that I am a candidate for office. I ran against a candidate in twenty seventeen, who I'm also running against now. The only donor on the campaign finance report for that person I'm running against was Andre Spivey, who gave a donation, I think the amount may have been, it was four or five hundred dollars. And so my thought is, maybe, this is just to make me look bad, because I happen to be chair of the CAC, and I'm an opponent of someone he supports. Or another office, or a police commission.
Police commission that he's running, he's running for, against the same person that he supports. But I, I, I mean, maybe I sound like Willie Bear?
Yeah, too, that was my opponent. I'm trying to stay clear of talking about what I'm doing, I don't want to use a public meeting for a campaign.
No, I'm the nineteen president, that's the big plan.
But here's the thing, here's the thing, that, that's a very good thing that you brought up, only because now, like, everything was kind of fuzzy in my head. Now, he's clearing it up now.
And he was helpful before, but I wasn't an opponent, maybe he didn't know I was planning on running again against this person before.
Go ahead, I'm saying.
Let's see, he can't say no more than he has.
So it's sad that everyone else is.
He has to say it, maybe after or before, or just say over there.
But I'm glad that you said it, I mean, there's not a lot of us here, or whatever. Right, but I, I, I see everything, you know, everything is cleared up for me now. I mean, I was.
Because if it does look bad for a person who's incumbent in office, that somehow that person can't do, make the organization functional, and then he's running for another city office, you see it.
Exactly.
Yeah, so that may be, that's, that's just a hypothesis. I don't know it's true, it's not even a theory, it's not a conspiracy theory, it's conspiracy hypothesis.
Like he was taking, kind of taking his time in the beginning when we first started, but it just seemed like, why is this?
Yes, true.
You remember when it first started?
It could have been because it's new, and it's something that he has not had to deal with. So, you know what I'm saying, when things I know get off the.
Right, exactly, but he has, he already has a blueprint that if he needs one, he needs to go and fetch it. He already has a blueprint in District Seven, because they already have one.
But don't, they, they so ineffective, don't nobody find that blueprint.
Now, I would like to say that, I don't want to use up the remainder of the meeting time.
I'd like to give.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am? Is that Karen?
This, this affects a lot of people in Detroit. These lots that they have taken up to two fifty, many people have been cutting these lots and applying for the lots, but they've been holding these lots, saying, I, they haven't been released. Now, now they're going to take the lots up for two fifty, and people have been cutting the lots and what have you. I don't think that's right.
Lots they were getting for a hundred, they're now raising the price.
Only if they're within the five hundred feet.
Yeah.
The five hundred feet lots, like, now. And I will tell you, the five hundred feet.
No, they, they, on there it says that, also the neighboring lots is two fifty.
Yeah, because those are the ones within five hundred and more feet, not your five.
Well, that's. Hey, all right, so, all right.
So, but I will say this, Karen, most lots on District Four, across I ninety-four, you will not find any because they got them all on hold.
So they're waiting to raise the price is the problem that we're dealing with here. Even though the people have been taking care of them and asking for them before. Oh, I'm gonna, you're gonna hear a lot of angry people over in the area between Grashit and Hayes, and on the other side of Grashit, because those people have been trying forever to get their lots and not getting them.
Exactly, exactly, and it's been, too, I know Lot Next to Me have been almost three years, and the sidewalk has not been replaced, and they're, they keep, they, they're, you know, dragging their feet about releasing that lot. And, and that, a lot of people hearing that, they also having problems with buying property on Grashit, on buildings, they're dragging their feet by this. And here's something that's really, really interesting. There's a house.
I think we should put that, go ahead, right, Karen.
What was that? There is a house on my block, has a real estate sign on it. Grass is tall, I called them, they tell us the land bank own it, and they're selling for a land, for the land, but that's a conflict of interest.
The land bank is supposed to be the one selling you the side lot, for under doubt.
They're not, and I'm, it's real estate property, also, real estate, a four, people are trying to get this building. The, the, um, real estate people, it's talking about it's twenty thousand, but they're, so they're selling it for the land bank. The grass is tall, so I can't find out who own it. And people want the building, and that's a conflict of interest for the land bank to get a real estate company to sell the property. Okay? What I mean?
Karen, the city has a real estate company that they use for commercial build.
This is not.
It is a building on Whittier that we have been trying to buy, and they want thirty-five thousand worth in the group that they've been on building.
Okay, but.
I.
On the street.
But I'm telling, Karen, the whole thing is they're owning all of this property because they're going to give it to the developer. I'm telling you now, that's why, nothing I see.
Can we put this on the agenda for the next meeting? Because we're almost up, we're getting low on time, and.
I don't, no, no, because we, I was talking about this other stuff that what, that we need to talk about, some of the stuff that's really going on here. Now, this building is on our street, it's not on Grashit, okay? And we need to speak with somebody about a conflict of interest, they can't do that. And we put it, while we, they're moving forward. You can do, do something about this. This is not on Grashit, this is actually on the block.
The city has a state park, they, the city contracts all their real estate stuff, but they don't do. That's the way, it's always off screen. Even on vacant property, they have a commercial state person that they deal with.
Well, we, we need, that's.
Always did it like that.
That's a conflict, that's, that's a conflict, conflict of interest. I don't care if it's been like that, that means that, there's a lot of things that have been like that, don't mean it's right. It's a conflict that.
Why you think I got a meeting with the mayor next on Friday? Because I want to find out why I don't have property available in our neighborhood area for the buyer, not a vacant lot.
Well, what, the what? Feeding.
And we got, and we got fifty thousand vacant lot, but none of them.
I'm asking about Eric Gold, four eight two two four. It goes away and things, they got over four hundred properties, but they got one percent.
One percent.
And it's half a double in chat.
Right.
I'm telling you, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
They got, they holding all the land for something, and they don't have a lot of money.
We need to tell the media, and we need to, I would like to sit in that meeting with you and America, if I could be invited and know when it is, because it's not fair for us. This, you know, for us, we've been slaving, keeping these lots clean, cutting them down, can you tell me?
I'll push a line, boys, on all their little property, and I can't just buy the one in front of them, and buy the one in back of them. And I told the mayor, and I think they wanted me to shut up because he told me send the address that you want to select it for. I ain't heard back from them, but I think he was trying to shut me up, but I said, oh, hey, shut up.
Okay, do we have a motion addressing this matter?
What we trying, what, what?
Well, because we have other things to vote on, and there's something to vote on with this, and we can keep it as a discussion at the moment.
Well, that's.
We have a motion to continue to discuss it.
That, you know, I think something very important.
Oh, it is important, I'm not doubting that. I'm just trying to take care of the issues that are on the agenda here, and then we could get to that. But it was, it was actually out of order. I mean, it's not in this part of the meeting.
Other part.
Oh, oh.
Well, I wanted to, there's another thing on the agenda that we need to get, get done with here.
Okay.
We're on initially.
Okay, let's move in. Let's move on.
Okay, so, well, I'm gonna, here, I'm making a motion. I'll move to table, actually, you know, this is correct. Under the agenda, there is new business, which is next up, after we get done with this other internal matter. So I make a motion to table this discussion for new business of this meeting.
That's, okay.
We don't have anything under new business right now, it just found its way to new business. Is there something? Okay, I vote in favor, Karen? Sandra voted in favor, Karen, do you vote in favor of that?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, cool, so we'll get to it right after the issue that we're on right now, which is back to my correspondence with Mr. Whitaker. So here, here's the other thing, is basically what, I could not find any, while I could find plenty wrong with him appointing off the list in the laws and in the city code, other than the fact that the terms are supposed to end on February fifteenth, I couldn't find any additional teeth to force an appointment immediately. And because, obviously, we can't go back to the fifteenth, so therefore, I really just don't see anything fruitful in challenging the senior issue thing, other than saying that we consider it improper, we're going to let it stand, and henceforth recognize Ms. Harris as a member of this organization. That, do we have any consensus on that? Okay, okay, that, I mean, it's not like we're accepting this as a de jure correct thing, but it is a de facto thing, and we're not going to be able to get what we want and what actually is proper under the city code with this council member this, this year. And that's, that's my impression. So it's kinda like picking battles. Now, the other man, in the same vein here, going back to my correspondence with Mr., um, I wanna call. The one, the ask and reply with Mr. Um, David Whitaker. Was the matter of now the youth member. Kind of fell into the same thing. That person, there are two people on that list. And all I have, I mean, you can literally flip a coin and pick one. He didn't do anything. Uh, but it's not like it takes his time. It doesn't take any effort on his part. So, anyway, this is clearly stone law. And at, at this point, while we have two things being done wrong. Um, I am at least gonna make some noise about this, and I don't see any problem making noise about this. It's not like there's a, a young person, if there was a fourteen-year-old sitting here who doesn't know what the heck just happened, he was appointed by society, we're objecting. Would be one thing, but there isn't such a situation. We don't have anybody. So I had a resolution that I emailed out. And I'd like to see if maybe we could all agree to this much, at least those of us who are present, and we do have a forum, um, of four people. Resolution to demand that Councilmember Andres Bybee appoint a youth member immediately. Whereas, section fourteen dash nine dash thirteen. Appointed members, terms excessive absences of the city code. Requires the city council representative of the district, appoint a youth member and senior issues member. And whereas these appointments are to be from a list provided by members elected to the CAC by January thirty-first. And whereas the elected members provided that list. And whereas the terms of these appointees was to commence on February fifteenth. And whereas it is July fourteenth. Typo, I'm gonna correct this right now. It's not July, it's July twelve. And whereas councilmember Andres Bybee hasn't appointed a youth member. Now, therefore be it resolved that the just, the current District Four Community Advisory Council members. Demand the appointment of the aforementioned person by our August ninth meeting. Furthermore, we will issue a news release stating our sentiments. And will explore and apply all legal remedies available to bring, uh, bring about this appointment. Comments on this? Question?
Uh, support the.
Okay, with the proper date. This is a matter, no objection to that. Okay. Gregory seconded that, uh, or, uh, made a motion actually to approve. Is there a second?
I, I was checking through.
Well, there isn't a second, it'll die for last, a second. Okay, it's been second, Sandra seconded it. Okay, now, now we're to the discussion. Um, anyone speaking against? I kind of.
So the discussion for me would be that you put in there, and you put in there the word, and. In alignment with the CAC, the city code for the CAC guideline. So if you put that in.
Um, yeah, what I put is, where, are you, are you referring to something you wanna add, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay, um. Okay, so where do you want that language placed? That, that's enough. That would be a motion to amend.
A motion to amend, which, uh, seeking legal remediation. That prior to that you put in alignment with the CAC, the City of Detroit CAC guideline.
Okay, I'm gonna write this in. All legal remedies in alignment with. Alignment.
With the City of Detroit CAC guideline. The land help, just so that they know that we are working. We are utilizing the guideline for these appointments. And we want them to know that we're following the rules. You're not.
I'm gonna read how this reads now. I'm just gonna read that last paragraph with that in there. Um, actually, I'll read that last sentence. If the last sentence now would read, with, with the amendment would read, and then I'll see if there's a second, but people need to know if they're gonna be seconding, what they're seconding. So I wanted to make sure I have this straight. Furthermore, we will issue a news release stating our sentiments and will explore the, and, and apply all legal remedies. In alignment with the City of Detroit CAC guideline, available to bring about this appointment. That's how I would read, and so the part that's new is in alignment with the, the, the City of Detroit CAC guideline. Okay, uh, is there a second on that? Gregory Preswell seconded it. Uh, any discussion on that amendment? If you notice, don't seem like we have a discussion on the amendment. Um, we can move, um, all those in favor of closing discussion and moving to a vote on the amended amendment and take saying aye. Okay, um, Karen, did you vote?
Yeah, I said aye.
Aye, okay, so, and I'll, I'll just go ahead and say aye, I'll say aye. Um, now, before I do that, oh, shoot, may I should made a discussion, well, I already, too late. I'd be out of order if I called. So I'll just leave it alone. Okay, um, so now we're going to a vote. Um, all in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Karen, are you voting?
I said aye.
Okay, I couldn't hear you over, and I say aye. So, um, that, then the amendment passes. And so with the amendment, we're back to the original motion amended. The amended, the, um, complete motion. So. Yeah, it, it's, it's that discussion. So, um, discussion in favor? Any discussion again? Yeah, we'd be voting on the motion now at, with the amendment. Okay, there, there is no discussion. Um, so if there are no objections, we can move forward to a vote. Um, on this was the original, oh, yeah, it was seconded, right? So that was in order. Okay, so we're gonna move forward with the vote. There are no objections. Um, all in favor of the resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Uh.
Aye. Was I a vote?
Oh, no, you're not.
Right, she does.
Sandra voted in favor, Gregory voted in favor, Karen?
I said aye.
You're in said aye, I'll say aye, I wrote it. Um, yeah, so that, that's four of us passed it. That's enough for, now, that's, that's, that's a binding vote on a resolution. I will say that I will try to see if I can find Jocelyn and, um. In Washington, and see if they'll sign on to it. And I think that would be even better if it was inside.
And I have a question.
Yeah.
How come I haven't watched it?
That's a darn good question. He always says he had something in the way, and my problem with it is that he, um, that we actually chose month, the, the second Monday of each month. Based, based largely upon his own schedule needs.
Right, he comes to a, a few meetings, but not the last.
At, at, at the beginning, he was fairly regular.
Right, right.
And we, I know Washington very well. In fact, he, he got my job when I left, it was a damn good lot. So I know Washington very well. But I haven't seen them in the last, I missed one meeting because I didn't know which one.
Right.
And I told you that Scotty, after that one, I found out. But I have not seen them.
Yeah, I agree. And we could, actually, we could vote to remove, but given the problems we have already filling. Um, it wa- I wouldn't do that. And also, the other thing is the language about removal, I don't think it really applies to elected. I think it applies to pointies without the air spending. If we got there.
Off, right, don't have to.
Right.
Yeah. The, the, um, I don't see any, any harm leaving them on there. I do see a problem if we remove.
May I ask something? Let me, let's look to that.
Gregory always looked a word to be ahead of.
And he got that on here, that you notify.
Right.
Right, but these things that you can't help.
Right, and Washington notified me initially when he first came to the mo- but the time, the meeting after the last one he attended, he actually did notify me. That he would not be able to make the meeting ahead of time. I did not see anything from him this time around at all. And I'm not, I don't believe I did last time either, but I will double check.
And I know that I made eight meetings and two meetings, and this may be like a life and hope with Monday. But I talked to you so now I know which one.
Correct.
So, and he wanted to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, he hasn't been in a while.
But you know, now, this also is a discussion that isn't on the agenda, and we have something that is. And that takes us, the next order of business is new business.
Okay, so now we're back to the land.
We're on the land issue. So let it rip. Here we are, we're on it.
Yeah, there.
Go ahead, Karen.
Well, that's what, it's, I say what, uh, about the house down the street, and, and I, I really feel that it's a conflict of interest. So we, I think this is something we need to take, um, to the mirror and if, if possible, take in the media. Because they're selling the house, they're telling us, anybody to buy a house in the land bank, they telling you, you gotta keep, keep it up the code, keep the grass, and do all this. But yet you have a real estate company, have a house, the grass is tall, the windows are broke out and boarded up. Call the real estate company, and they say we're selling for the land bank. The land bank is not even holding up their bargain, they're keeping up the property. And they're stopping other people from buying the property, and it looks a mess. And it, this is a conflict of interest. They cannot say on one hand, they're, um, selling the, uh, property for the land bank. And then the other hand, have it undercover being sold by a real estate company. They can't do that.
I agree with you completely. My issue is that. That you will get a ticket if you let your property go like that. But like I told you, we're trying to buy a building. And the roof is paved in, the building ain't secure, it look a mess, and they need a flight ticket. The city needs a flight ticket for this property. But they're not gonna give themselves a flight ticket. But if I own the property, I would.
You know who pays the city's flight ticket?
I do.
That, that, if, if the people in charge of what's not being done, had to pay the flight tickets, things might change.
Yeah, but when they get their money, I don't, we're going back to Monday.
Yeah, yeah, I, I totally understand. And like, it's like, I wasn't trying to diminish the issue, I was just trying to go, put things in the proper order. Uh, it is a big problem. And I, I heard directly from people as I'm walking through the neighborhoods, in fact. Uh, Karen, I know if I was on your block, I walked right past Eden Gardens, um, knocking on all these doors, talking to people. Um, and all over, especially on that side, maybe it's just sign ninety-four, but even worse, so it seems. If you get like past Kelly and Hayes to, to Grashit, and then that little wedge between McNichols and Grashit of this district.
Yeah.
Those people feel completely ignored.
Oh, women.
They, they talk to me, they go, no one ever comes here from the City of Detroit.
You wanna know what we say about? Yep, nobody ever comes about ninety-four cuz we the fourth section of District Four.
Exactly.
We the step here, that we recognize that. Cuz for some reason they think we vote, but we vote, okay? We vote and we take care of our neighborhood. This show has not done anything for us in a long time.
There's like the proverbial other side of the track.
That's right.
Yeah.
And I even said that Andres Bybee, cuz they don't have nothing in our neighborhood. Everything they give, they give on this last night. Nothing, nothing.
I agree with that heartily. And you know, the thing, like when you say that they're holding up all this property in District Four. And that, you know, that's, they have the interest for the developers. But we've been here all these years, covering these lots, maintaining this neighborhood, fighting to improve the neighborhood. But yet we can't buy lots next to us because they're holding them? No, we, the, the, this, um, this.
And I have five of them.
Yeah, I have one in back of me that I cannot purchase. The whole block is empty except for one house.
To show the disparity, I'm more than happy to say that I got five of them. And that, that shows a disparity, because if I got five of them, why can't you have five women, the five vacant lots around?
Listen, we got so much contiguous vacant land, and they coming over.
Yeah, I know.
And they're not the one houses on the block. And the same way they did over there in the Virginia Park area, I'm a keeper, they gave that developer six hundred per. Okay, that was houses and vacant lots. And if you want the vacant lot, you have to buy it from the developer at its cost, not that hundred dollars. And I refuse to let them do that over in my neighborhood. I refuse. That's why I got this meeting with the mayor, cuz I'm telling them, look, and I'm telling our community members, if you can buy a lot, they buy it, the two bones sit right in the middle of it.
You know what would really throw a monkey wrench in all this stuff they're doing, but you know, that blocking us from doing that? Um, without stating a pro or composition, just as a matter of fact, they would never be able to pull it off with that revised version of the charter.
Mm-hmm.
That's right.
But that's.
It would be a problem.
That probably the one is a bunch of them, cuz it makes them accountable.
Right, so many things that they can't.
Anytime we got all of these projects of vacant property and abandoned houses, but nothing is for sale. You will not find a lot in my area that's for sale.
Okay, I'm gonna make a suggestion.
I have one to speak to, two of them in front of my house. I can't buy one, neither one of them.
So that we can actually get something done about this instead of just being angry. Um. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion, and I guess it, it may be out of order for the tier motion. I would entertain a motion. By someone here, keep it north. I would entertain a motion that, um, we agree to, um, in, to, um, correspond. And, and we'll publicize the meeting so that we're not violating open meeting back. But a motion to, um, what, to help, to have discussion. Followed by a public meeting in which we will, um, come out and set a date. So we'll be having that in the open, discuss a date and a location to hold a press conference. On the disparity of, um. Side lot. Purchase ability, um, on the other side of ninety-four, as well as, um, just simply the fact that people have been maintaining their side lot. And have not been able to buy them. Um, whereas it seems like the city is giving them to developers. I know it's very wordy, Gregor, I know you can wait to break down. Um, I'd entertain a motion to that effect, if anyone wants to make a motion like that, and if they wanna make it more concise than I did, that'd be even better.
Thing is, they can opposition of the land going to a development.
Okay.
Because he has been giving them to the developer, yet I just know that there's a plan. You got all the land locked down.
When you say the land specifically, land that people have been trying to purchase.
You got all the land locked down, where it's not on the site for sale. Then you got a plan for that land.
Right, and, and what they're doing, like you said, that, that my lot been baked for two and a half years. And he said, oh, it's not up for sale, they're not replacing sidewalk, and they're not putting it up for sale purposely. So that developers can come in here and just do a land grab.
Exactly. They, no, no, they don't even have to do a land grab. He gonna say in the name of development. He's gonna give this land to the developer at a low cost, so he can help to stabilize the neighborhood. That's how they put it. They call it neighborhood stabilization. Called neighborhood stabilization. That's why we even got the T seven over there so that they could use that fat million from. To help stabilize, get the beginnings and to it. Proposal land on there on the one house on the block to clear that land and then the developer.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I make a motion all day long from now.
I second it.
What is the motion? I said I would entertain a motion, but I didn't make a motion.
You said the motion was gonna be that we're gonna set a meeting day, sit down and, and come up with a press conference.
Yeah, we're gonna discuss the content before, but we need to have a public meeting to bring this out.
Press conference to discuss the, uh, disparity in disparity. Of available land from this side of ninety-four. Just before, uh. Yeah, so motion for. A meaning. Disparity. In.
I ninety-four and draft.
Okay, uh, south of ninety-four and nothing.
That's, I thought, I always thought it was west ninety-four because eight mile is north downtown is south and draft is front between eight and downtown. So, 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 so. Western ninety-four. This is eastern ninety-four, we're western ninety-four.
Okay, between east.
And western ninety-four.
Yes. The motion is for us to have a meeting.
It would be considered a special meet.
We have to come up with a date for that.
Yeah, we should. Because it's, it's all about the open meetings act. Otherwise, they'd say, oh, let's just email each other back and forth, come up with a plan and do it. But we can't do that as a CAC without it being open. And so, that's why we're gonna do it.
Okay, so, so openly.
And we could, we could exchange information before the meeting so that we're not starting out blind. People could propose things by email to other members.
Right.
Of how, I think we should, this should be our main statement, this should be our focus. These are the facts that we should put in our press release, that kind of thing. Uh, we could share that in between, but then all of that needs to be put out there in the open before we actually conclude it.
Okay.
I mean, that all has to be part of the, the open discussion. Yeah, an open meeting and we're gonna have to, I'm trying to think of how much time we need to give on a special meeting. It might be a two week type. Um. Let me see, let me see, maybe we could do this like this. Let me see, where, where were that put us? I don't know, how does the twenty-sixth of July sound then? It's a Monday. I just, just like now.
What time?
Uh, twenty-sixth of July on, at seven P M?
That'll work for me.
That'll work.
Okay, we got a date.
Twenty-sixth at seven o'clock, same thing.
Yeah, same.
Yeah, it'd be a special meeting on organizing a press conference.
Okay, right here or by Zoom?
Well, that, you know, the city has been doing things by Zoom, um, even though I thought the Michigan law expired about face-to-face meetings. So. I'm gonna say, well, yeah, special meeting doesn't have to have the same restrictions. I'm gonna say we can do it by Zoom and it'll be a special meeting. And if I find out there's a problem with that, I'll reserve the right to find a location.
Okay.
All right.
Because, especially since it's gonna be a one-topic special meeting. Um, we're not doing anything, it's not part of our regular meeting schedule. Cause our regular meeting schedule needs to rotate. So if we do have to pick, pick a location, maybe it will be, but our regular meeting location has to rotate around community. Right now, we're just over here in Morningside, next one can't be born. I'd rather not even be in.
Going toward nine o'clock.
Yeah, I know we are. And that's already, we're already over. So I wanna, so I, that's why I wanted to make another meeting also, is we're not gonna resolve everything.
All right.
Okay. Okay, so we're still on new business. Is there a vote in favor of we're gonna, um, correspond and then have a special meeting on the twenty-sixth, seven P M? Um, is, is there unanimous agreement on this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay, so there's not a problem. Okay, next, um, on new business, I'm just gonna make a brief statement, cause I know it's getting late, but I really just can't hold my gun about this. Um, and it's about misinformation. I'm not gonna, again, use this platform, though you can probably figure out where I'm coming from. I'm not gonna be using this platform to say how people should or should not vote on a issue. But I do think it is a responsible thing to just simply address, um, baseless claim, fake news, misinformation when it happens. And, uh-oh, I guess they didn't want me to do that. Uh, you missed, anyway. Um. Now, my, the misinformation is this. There have been, and this is by the Free Press and an organization, I'm trying to remember the name of the group putting out those glossy flyers. Um, I don't know if it's, it's.
About.
It's got a picture of Sheffield on the cover. But it's, but it's sponsored by a pack. Right, it's that flyer. Okay, anyway, that.
Yeah, that's, those are, those are his people.
Well, and I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna address just the, the information itself.
Real colorful fly.
Yeah, that, that, that very beautiful expensive flyer.
Right.
And also the Detroit Free Press. And this is where it really gets disturbing. The editorial board of a well-rep, a high reputation newspaper, the Detroit Free Press, has been publishing blatant lies. And where, no matter how you vote, vote based on fact. And that's all I'm saying, is vote based on fact and tell the truth when you're trying to talk to people about how you believe they should vote. Um, here's the, here's the misinformation. I guess gonna address it correctly is information. They claim there are forty-seven new elected positions created by the revised charter, having been in the, in the interior of that whole process. I can, and actually, even if I wasn't, you can read, everyone can read it. It's out there. Everyone could check it. You don't have to trust me at all. If you want, if you think I'm a compulsive liar, fine, read the document. You'll find out what this particular thing I'm saying is true. They are lying. There are not forty-seven new elected positions. There are exactly twelve new elected positions. Yes, if, if the revision were to pass, there would be twelve new elected positions. I enumerate them in a couple posts I've made. I will put such a post. On the D four C A C dot org website for people to look. I will even cite where you can look in the charter revisions. They don't have to read through the whole thing, where it actually says the information I'm citing. One more thing to add to that. Those forty-seven, I mean, those twelve additional positions, none of them are salary position. The freak said that there are forty-seven new salary positions. None of them are salary. The people get, the twelve, not forty-seven, the twelve additional positions. Get a stipend for attending meetings, not a salary, just like, and, and now there's no amount specified. It's up to the city council, but like the board of police commissioners, they get like seventy-five bucks.
There would be fire commissioners.
Yeah, the fire commissioner. Here's the other thing about that. Those positions, while it's technically true that there are twelve new elected positions, I think it was, and I got, trying to get my number, I think seven. Of the fire commissioners already existed as appointed positions. So they're arguing that this is gonna cost billions of, it ranges from, the news I think said two hundred fifty million. And, um, some other groups said, you know, Sheffield people said like, I think two or three million or something, billion, I mean, with a P. Um, there's no way in heck that it's gonna even add one million to the budget, just looking at that information. Um, not even a hundred grand, but.
The warning is, what you can put on the website is everyone should read the charter. Don't point them to anything but.
Oh, no, but I will because I feel it's my responsibility to challenge falsehood. And effectively, it's a form of voter suppression when you're lying to people.
But you can't do that. We gotta stay nonpartisan. We can't.
It is, I, I'm, I'm staying nonpartisan. I'm just about truth.
We can't, it's about educating and let people make that decision. We can't favor one thing over enough.
To be cool because you run it.
Yes, and, and this is a governmental.
Be cooler because you run it.
Read the proposal. That's why we have to.
Yeah, but no one's gonna read a hundred fifty pages.
They'll have to just read different, you could read different excerpts.
Right, you can, whatever it is, like, read the one on the police commission, read the one on this, but don't be like, they're telling a lie.
Oh, they are.
It's only, uh, we know they are. You can't say that.
Why now?
Because we have to stay neutral.
I'm not telling people how to vote. I'm just saying that there are lies being published and neither of the lies.
Okay, but you know what I'm saying?
The Free Press is lying. Oh, I, I will.
Say it's read, educate yourself on proposal B. Look at this, look at this section on police commission or fire commission.
Right.
Look at the section on this. Please read these sections prior to voting.
That's right.
So that they can educate themselves. But we can't say anything that's one way or the, cause they're all about this most of the time. But we can't say, we can't say it.
They are.
All right, well, anyway, I'm calling them up. There was another lie I didn't get to yet in the Free, in the Free Press. The other blatant lie is it says that there are five of that, wait, let's see. The, the new charter will add five, um, they're called, um, advisory commission. With, or, or, no, it will, no, not five. It'll be five member advisory commissioners in all seven districts add. The only advisory commissioners indicated on the charter are either appoint, they're all appointed, a hundred percent appointed, none elected. And they are in the, um, arts. There's one for health. And then there's, um, the mayor may create advisory commission. There are no elected advisory commissions anywhere in the church. In the old or new. They're simply not there. They're making it up. They're lying. And I will call a lie a lie. I don't think, say, being. Suborning dishonesty and fraud, I don't believe is a legal responsibility. Informing people of, is of lies and fraud is a legal responsibility. I, I feel obligated to inform my constituents of the truth when they are being, if, if I did that, for instance, the city is advising people not to let strangers in and look in their basement. Is that wrong? Should they? Oh, there, there weren't, there wasn't anything warning people not to like?
No, but they were saying, make sure that whoever comes as a volunteer, they sell a badge and this.
Right, so that, that's property for exercising an effort to protect their, their constituents from fraud.
Our job to inform residents and educate them.
Right.
So what, if you wanna do something, you can put up the Free Press article and then over here, you can put up the, the proposal section. Read section.
That's what I was gonna do.
But you put both of them up there and let them read them both.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, I intended to do. Okay, so we're in agreement. That's exactly what, no, I was gonna say they're lying because they are.
Yeah, but you can't do that. That's why you put up there.
All right, I'll simply say that the statements are incorrect.
No, you let.
I can't say one plus one equals two?
Listen.
I cannot.
Put up the Free Press article, listen to what I'm saying. And I read through it and I see there. And then over here, you tell me read proposal section, but, but read. And I see that there's a big gap.
Right.
In, in what I read here and what I read here.
Right.
Then I know how to vote. But I can't say that they're lying over here because then that's what I'm telling you to vote over here.
So if I say one plus one equals four, and I insist on it, you can't say, even though I have a master with a minor in math, you can't accuse me of lying if I say one plus one equals four.
I got a, a dang old degree and I know I can't say that.
No.
I know I could not tell people that.
Don't say that.
When I'm, when I'm telling them on a, from a governmental thing that I'm elected.
No.
Not as a private citizen, I can say they're lying.
But I hear politicians doing that all the time. How many politicians have you heard say that the claims of the Republican, the Trump supporters, that Trump won the election is fraud, is, is based.
They do it on their campaign.
Guys are getting off track here. They really are.
Really, really are, really are.
He doesn't know what they're gonna be liable on slander by now.
My defense is basic arithmetic. Um, all right, now.
Way off track.
We're not done, we're almost done. Okay, now what we need to do is we had a part for public comment, is the public comment. Oh, no, yeah, okay. Location for the next regular meeting, August ninth. Actually, public comment will come after this. Uh, okay, we can't do it here. It's being a rotation.
Oh, so, so what's the, what?
All right, and what I will say is.
We said that, what, what's the location?
What I would recommend is that, um, I would say we don't have one yet and I'm gonna, I'm gonna pursue the Samaritan Center again.
Okay.
But this time I will try to get something else in more advanced. I was holding out too long on that one.
Can you try library?
I'm gonna try, could try a library.
Yeah, well, uh, wait, the, the one of war, war, war thing that I would try is open.
Do they have a public meeting room that's large enough for several people to show up if they wanted to?
I believe so, but you please, uh, double check behind.
They, they have both very large.
And where's that library at?
War and, and the other drive.
That's like, that's on the border of Morningside and East English Village, we need to spread it out.
Okay, uh, let me see. We have, uh, we have the. Uh, well, we have park. We have park, but we don't have, uh, we have, we have a library over on Dickerson, but I don't know if this one is.
Can you investigate that library on Dickerson for me and I'll investigate the Samaritan's area?
Dickerson is closed.
Yeah, Dickerson and, and the Hump is closed.
Uh, we have, I'm trying to think of what else. Well, we have Skinner Park and we have commemoration park, but we have, our tables are not under one, you know, we have. But we do have the arts and culture pavilion and we could just sit on there if you bring your own people. Oh, yes, we do. We have the pavilion. We have a park. We have Skinner Park right next to Dendi Ice.
Write this down, hold on, okay, okay.
We got the pavilion with the tables.
So you're gonna, you're gonna, I'm gonna see about that.
My baby's designing and I got the money to have to do.
Oh, my God. Can you send me the information about that park so I know exactly what you're referring to?
Right next to Dendi Ice.
Very nice park.
Center Park, okay.
Dendi Skinner.
Skinner, Skinner Park.
Next to Dendi.
We got the pavilion right.
And I have the pavilion, good. Yeah, actually, this is probably a pavilion, not a good people, I call it. I understand what you're talking about, now, now I'm picturing like these little things, like, where there's enough room for like, you know, a couple to get married under.
Yeah, we gotta, gotta save away for Permemoration Park.
Yeah, okay, now I know, yeah, I think you're right. Um. Okay, anything? Okay, so we'll, we'll pursue those things, and otherwise, it's the same bad place, I mean, same bad time, same, you know. August ninth, we already have a date, seven P M. Okay, so I'll, we'll investigate, um, Skinner Park, and also, um, I think, I think Skinner Park at least is a. Is there any preference, should I try to get an indoor location first, if we can't do it, use Skinner Park as a fallback, or you just want?
I still say that a library.
All right, well, there's one person, Gregory wants.
Yeah, cause I don't, I don't research in the park, I just tell them I'm having a meeting.
Yeah.
Those, okay, if I first pursue the possibility of an indoor venue and then. Okay, all right, so we'll just do that, okay, so then.
Library, uh, war in the outer drive.
I thought we weren't moving it around.
Yeah, I, I just don't wanna pick a location, we might do the library some later date, but I don't want it two weeks in a row, I mean, two months in a row.
Yeah.
Have the regular meeting in the same region because of.
You don't wanna make us feel like.
Well, also, the city ordinance says.
You have to move it around.
Oh, okay, okay.
They should be held around. So we're, I wanna stay with the spirit of what that law says instead of trying to find ways. Um, okay, so, the other thing is, um, finally, there's one more thing left to do. All right, is that a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Gregory Cressel moved to adjourn, is there a second? Okay, um, discussion?
No discussion.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I think that was, um, unanimous, everyone, um, member and non-member voted for that, we are adjourned.
All right.
All right, thank you. All right.
All right. I got, I got a lot to do.